As such, I'm proposing the following changes to city code. Regarding time, prohibit all camping between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Regarding place, a complete ban on camping in specific locations, including but not exclusive to parks, docks, sidewalk areas intended for pedestrians, as well as areas near construction sites, schools, daycare center, existing shelters, high-crash corridors, and environmental overlay zones. Regarding manner, camps may not obstruct access to private property or to businesses, start or use gas heaters in or around a site, set up permanent structures, accumulate garbage or hazardous materials, assemble or offer to sell multiple bicycles, cars, or other parts. Enforcement of this ordinance is intended to be a tool to connect people with appropriate resources while also addressing behavior that is damaging to our community at large. The ordinance requires written warnings prior to any penalty. After two documented warnings, an additional violation could result in criminal penalties. Our intention is to offer alternative shelter opportunities to those living on our streets. My goal is to have enough shelter, housing, and treatment access available so that we can fully eliminate unsanctioned, unsheltered camping within the city of Portland. I believe that this would be helpful to those who are currently struggling on our streets, and I believe that this is what Portlanders in general are asking for as well. Since announcing these changes, our offices received overwhelming positive support for this proposal. These changes are critical. You may not agree, and that's fine. That's democracy. These changes are critical to the city's compliance with state law and vital to our community's ability to return to the vibrant place that we all love.
To me, this is just like one giant fucking racket.
Isabella Gurnick?
Why you just don't do that? You saw me walking up here. My colonial name is Demetria Hester, which y'all should already know because I maced Jeremy Christian the night before he went on his rant, right? You remember me, don't you, Wheeler? Huh? The same person that you came so smugly and said, "You get to make the decision," right? But we're the community. Who pays your salary? Who pays your salary, Rubio? Who pays MAP's salary? Ryan, who pays your salary? Gonzalez, who pays your salary? We do. But you sit here so smug and so self-entitled because you're white men, because you have money. You've lined your pockets with the money you're supposed to give to the community in your pockets. Are you homeless? No, you would never be homeless because you're white. You're a white man. And you feel entitled, don't you? Don't you? Because you pay your way everywhere you go, don't you? Yes, no? Or you don't have nothing to say now. But yet, you wanted to shut us down when we was talking, letting you know that this is a capitalist system that you created. Now it's houseless people. At first, it was black people, police commissioner, which is going to make money over hand over hand building more prisons to house houseless people. Aren't you going to become rich, Rubio, saying that? Oh, you're against it, but look who you are with. How can you be against it, but look who are you with? This is just a lie. It's all bullshit. You know it. Y'all have already made the decision, like you say. Mayor Wheeler, you're not our mayor. You appointed yourself mayor by paying for it. July 1st, when this comes into effect, be ready for what you had to deal with in 2020, us in the streets. Be ready. Be ready. Because we're coming for your jobs, your houses, your cars. What are you gonna do then? Decide. Because we're coming for you, Ted Wheeler. Fuck you.
All right, we've got into the personal threat phase of the council session. Who's next? Who's next?
Threat so unnecessary.
Ren Simmons?
How's it going? So Portland is losing people, according to the latest statistics. And I recently just moved to Portland, less than half a year ago, six months ago, somewhere around there. And my testimony of this is that within three weeks of moving to Portland, my car was stolen. First time ever that's ever happened to me in my life. The police found the car a few weeks later in an unsanctioned camping area. And then beyond that, I was going to the grocery store the other day, trying to just get some groceries. I passed someone who was smoking crack or fentanyl or something on the way and, you know, passing it and being like, really? And then after that, too, there was someone defecating in a pizza box on my way to the grocery store. And so you wonder why people aren't wanting to stay in Portland. Like, I fell, I visited Portland in 2018, and I fell in love with the place. And I loved it so much, I'm like, yeah, I want to move out here and, you know, when the time came, and I did. And now that I'm here, I'm really concerned. And it's, you know, I understand it's an issue everywhere, but the thing is, like, I'm, you know, trying to pay taxes and, you know, taking, you know, pay my part of the city as well. And if I call someone to try and help out, saying, hey, there's, you know, someone doing something outside of my home that makes me feel unsafe, the police don't do anything. They don't have power to do anything. So given this, given this here, hopefully gives some power to actually help out the situation if I need to call someone and feel unsafe. And, you know, there's a reason why people are leaving. There's a reason why people don't want to be here. Like, does that sound like a city you want to leave in, where you're going to the grocery store and you have to watch someone defecating into a pizza box? And you can't call anyone about that? Like, it's, it's, I agree. Like, I would, I would love to give more of my tax money to give them housing. I would love to do that. But I also want to have some kind of protection so I can also feel safe as a citizen in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That complaints, testimony.
All right. Welcome.
Oh, I don't feel welcome. First, I'd like to say that this is indigenous land that was not ceded, that was stolen. So firstly, anything here decided is null based on that alone. Secondly, I am an ecological artist and climate change researcher. I echo everything that's already been said and ask you to listen with intention. And also, Mr. Gonzalez, I've been frustrated with your lack of full attention that you've given a lot of people. I feel that right now. I have seen, however, white cis men have gotten full attention and would like to continue to bring attention to our systemic privilege that we enable, which this ableist criminalization policy is based upon. And secondly, as a climate researcher, we should know that we have one of the hottest summers coming, the summer, which also includes climate migration and drought issues that many unhoused people are currently having to face outside. That includes wildfire, that includes asthmatic breathing issues, which by not giving them shade, not continuing to enforce shelter, not giving water, as these conditions continue, you are basically saying that you agree with the way that we continue to look at climate change and those who are most impacted, which are indigenous, people of color, those who experience disabilities. I experience a disability. It's a degenerative neuromuscular disease. I've also experienced mental illness from the time of age 11. I went to PNC. I have over $50,000 of debt invested in this community, going to school to learn about these policies and these issues and making work because I believe in the power of collective healing. I don't hear that from anything any of you have to offer. I hear violence. I would like you all, for the last 15 seconds, to sit in shame of the amount that you continue to bring to our community.
Thank you.
I'm asking you to listen for the last five seconds.
Next up, we have Kiki Harbin. Reynoldson?
Hi, guys. I really don't like any of you. You guys don't like me. I'm homeless. I lived these streets in 1975 when 205 wasn't built. Who are you guys? Where you come from? Are you a Portlander? Were you born here? Were you poor? Have you ever suffered? Have you ever had a natural disaster? Has your wife died? Has your children died? Did you get depressed? Oh, your family didn't love you, so you hit the streets at 13? I testify the way I want. Don't tell me that I have a right to stand just as much as I have the right to talk. Check it out. I'm not scared of you guys. I'm not scared of you. You should be scared of us as the people. That's right. Mayor Ted Wheeler, your house is in the view of me seeing the hills and the trees. So is yours. 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 And everybody that's on this panel wants to play a game with the money that's been given to us to solve a problem. $3.2 billion? You did not buy one house, 17,000 ghost houses in this city. And you didn't buy one homeless person a house, but you all own a fucking house. And I'm scared. I got the right to swear. I'm an American, not a United States citizen. I was born on federal land. I'm sovereign. You hear me now? I'm sovereign, and so is everybody here. The way you spell my name on my ID is wrong. My name is spelled capital D, lowercase u, lowercase a, lowercase i, lowercase e, capital S, lowercase c, lowercase o, lowercase d, lowercase r, capital, I mean T, capital R, lowercase c, lowercase y, lowercase n, lowercase o, lowercase l, lowercase d, lowercase s. I am an individual, not a corporation. You have no right to sentence me in any way under your corporate laws. I'm sovereign. Sovereign, so am I. We're Americans, and I'm a soldier. I am a disabled veteran. Did you serve our country? Are you serving our country by being dirty people? Greedy, extremely greedy, dirty people. Your families eat well while I starve as a sovereign American. You see how skinny I am? It's because you guys starved us. You give me $58 a month to eat with, how much do you eat at breakfast, lunch, or dinner for just your fat malsets? I'm not playing. I'm not scared. You better look at me. I've been here in them parks since Meyer and Franks was the largest building in downtown Portland homeless. I've watched you build. I've watched you dirty. You selling our city to California? Giving our money away to California? Where are you all from? Do you guys answer me? Where are you all from? I never heard of you before. Five years ago. Or you, or you, or you, or you. You're all dirty. You're out of California, South of California.
You're gonna have to wrap it up. You're two minutes over.
You sold our city to bankers.
You're gonna have to wrap it up.
You're all good.
Thank you. Thank you. It's all right. All right, everybody, let's, let's keep the temperature down, everybody. Let's, let's keep the temperature down. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hector, thank you. Next individual, please. All right, thank you for your testimony. Next, let's, let's give somebody else the mic. We heard you. Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you. The next person, please.
Next up, we have Cass Johnson.
Be ready. I was here 14 years ago.
Okay, next up, we have Cass Johnson.
Welcome.
Ova'o pika'ke ka hananui. E'e ho mai ka ike mai lunamai'e. Oname'a hunanoeao, onamele'e. E'e ho mai, e'e ho mai, e'e ho mai'e, ho mai. Ka ike mai lunamai'e. Oname'a hunanoeao, onamele'e. E'e ho mai, e'e ho mai, e'e ho mai'e, ho mai. Ka ike mai lunamai'e. Oname'a hunanoeao, onamele'e. E'e ho mai, e'e ho mai, e'e ho mai'e. Honorable people, I pray, I pray to and with and for our ancestors and future generations. Please guide all of us into humanity, love, integrity, and compassion. Please protect us in the streets. Please help us know our place, position, role, and responsibility in service to each other, earth, and this time we share. Please blanket our black, native, queer, trans, disabled leaders with good, potent, protected power as we work and play together toward total destruction of white body supremacy and these people who enforce it. I pray we, the people, are able to live in a society that does not coerce nor control, a society that does not legalize and monetize our deaths. E'e ho mai.
Cass. Heather Lynn Van Wild in person.
Thank you. Talk about putting the cart before the horse. AstroTurfing Dark Money Group People for Portland released polling stating 23% of Portlanders opposed this ordinance.
It's long overdue, and I applaud your effort to codify this so that various bureaus have full authority to humanely redirect individuals to sanctioned camping, parking, shelters, and other resources. Many of our city's best intentions have misfired and come back to haunt us. We have enabled and in some ways even encouraged street living to the point where far too many of our streets and public spaces are now inaccessible, environmentally unsound, unsafe, often resembling open-air insane asylums. Yeah, I know, it's cliche, and it's all because of you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, council members. My name is Tim McCormick. I'm the director of Housing Alternatives Network nonprofit.
So let me begin by reading off some facts. A record 193 homeless people died in Multnomah County in 2021, a 53% increase compared to the previous year. Substance abuse contributed to about 60% of those deaths. Last year, 36% of pedestrians killed in traffic-related crashes were homeless. Homicides in the homeless community more than doubled to 18 in 2021, amounting to 20% of homicides that year. In 2022, there were almost 2,000 homeless-related fires, 41% of all fires in the city. These figures are all the more staggering because the homeless comprise of only about 0.7% of Multnomah County.
We have Sandra Comstock.
Hi, I'm Sandra Comstock, and I'm here because I'm really tired of cleaning up after the city, a city that punishes rather than helps unsheltered neighbors.
My name is David Dixon, and I co-chair the Downtown Neighbor Association Homeless Houseless Team. During the COVID camp-in-place period, our 25 good neighbor volunteers delivered survival items on a weekly basis to our unhoused neighbors in downtown. As a good neighbor, I witnessed firsthand the cruelty and inhumanity of unsheltered camping. We held a memorial service for a double amputee who died in his tent. I greeted a young girl who returned to her camp in tears after being raped. A 15-year-old camp leader died of an overdose. We must build more housing.
I'm Mayor Wheeler. My name is Jonathan Malsen, and I'm a business and property owner in Portland's Central Eastside, and I'm a board member of the Central Eastside Industrial Council. Over the past 20 years, our business, Beam Development, has been fortunate to work with countless small businesses of all types in the Central Eastside, and therefore I'm confident we have a unique insight into the challenges these small businesses face, which are such a vital part of our local economy. The primary concern we hear from these small businesses is the lack of safety on the street resulting in employees and customers not feeling safe coming into our district and thus making it extremely difficult to sustain or grow a business in the district and provide the quality jobs that if historically existed there. The main factor driving the perception and reality of an unsafe district has been the proliferation of unsanctioned camping on sidewalks, in the street, under overpasses, around off-ramps, and on other publicly owned properties, of which there are many in the Central Eastside. In a district struggling to recover following the pandemic, navigating around tents, trash, human excrement, and drug paraphernalia is simply too intimidating and traumatic for many workers and customers to feel safe returning. Something needs to change. I believe our community's intentions have been in the right place by prioritizing compassion for those who find themselves on our street. However, I also believe that our community has been taken advantage of by a significant number of people that do not want shelter, treatment, or the like, and merely want to live consequence-free on our streets. We need a new approach to the persistent problems of houselessness and unsanctioned camping, an approach that will allow our city to revitalize, ensuring we have resources to help those in our community most in need. For those reasons, I support this ordinance and respectfully ask that the council adopt it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Art Fortuna.
Commissioners, my name is Art Fortuna. I own a business called Vibrant Table Catering. We're located in southeast Portland. I also am the current vice president of Central Eastside Industrial Council. I think that that's a step in the right direction, and we support both the CEIC and the CED do support this measure so that we can give the Portland police a tool that helps them move in the direction that I think in the long term will be improved. Thank you very much.
Next up.
Again, folks, if everybody here agreed with you, that's a problem. You don't want to be in a democracy where everybody agrees on everything. Let's, let's have a competition of ideas. Let's hear everybody out. Can we do that, please?
Next up, we have Scott Herman.
Mayor Wheeler, commissioners, my name is Scott Herman. I'm the executive director of Blanche House, and I use he/him pronouns.
Thank you. My name is Chris Hansen. I founded Nordic Semiconductor about five years ago in downtown Portland. We are a public company based in Norway with about 2,000 employees worldwide. We currently have about 30 employees in downtown Portland and about another 60 spread across the Pacific Northwest and the rest of the United States. I mean, I chose downtown Portland at the time, five years ago, because it was a hip city, easy to attract new employees. It was a nice city to live in. It had good transportation, public transportation into downtown from outlying areas, easy walking distance, you know, the walking score was very good, so people could go to restaurants and things like that. And it was a great success. But unfortunately, because of the, you know, unsanctioned housing, I guess it's called, those benefits that we had have actually turned into liabilities for us now. It's, it's very difficult. We have employees, actually, who are frightened, okay? So instead of using public transportation now, we're actually funding parking for people's cars in downtown. So instead of using our excellent transportation system, we are paying for parking for people so they can avoid it, which is not what we really want long-term in the city. Additionally, we have not getting people coming from abroad on the Delta flight from Amsterdam. People have been, unfortunately, had some bad experiences with this, so they are not even coming to Portland any longer either. So with that, I'm just saying that this is the situation that we see. So I'd like to, for the mayor and the council, I support Measure 451, but I also want to stress that we need to support the vulnerable and needy amongst us in the city, too. We cannot exert those responsibilities at the same time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Next up, we have Katie O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Katie O'Brien, and I'm the executive director at Rose Haven. We are a daytime shelter that serves women, children, and gender diverse folks who are experiencing homelessness and poverty.
The city and county have the capacity to open alternative shelters, and the city ordinance before you today provides an incentive to get chronically unhoused into shelters, possibly alternative ones, where they'll receive better services. To say that unrestricted camping anywhere, anytime is a path to services or somehow provides harm reduction is, to me, is cynical and nothing less than cruel. You are our leaders, and you have a choice of where the city is to go. Do you want a place that is attractive to newcomers, a place to live, work, and make community, or one that provides a very deep future for the rest of the time? Thank you.
Next.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Lauren Armani, and I'm from Sisters of the Road. Within the last 10 years, I also received the title of unicorn simply for being a lifelong resident of Portland. We are so rare now because of the devastation left in the wake of the latest iteration of colonization. Gentrification.
Hi, my name's Finn Bouliat. I use they/he pronouns. I don't have anything as succinct or impressive to say.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Hannan, and I'm with Sisters of the Road. In my free...
Good afternoon, council. I'm Kaya Sand. I'm the executive director of Street Roots.
Next up, we have Annette Johnson.
Hi, my name is Annette Johnson. I go by Nettie. I'm a vendor here at Street Roots.
Best Street Roots vendor now for two years. It's been a blessing. I also work with Brown Score, who is around cleaning up the city. I'm not on the payroll, but keep showing up daily to daily.
Joshua Magnanimously.
Magnanimously, I absolutely am opposed to this proposition. It's the horse in front of the cart.
Okay. My name is Chris Liddum. My pronouns are they/them.
Assume informed, responsible leadership. Leadership cannot be performed remotely. Arbitratory decision-making is fascist.
Hello, my name is Molly Hogan, and I'm the director of the Welcome Home Coalition.
First, they come for the tins and tarts. Am I right, Renee? Thank you for the time. I'm not thanking this council. I'm definitely not thanking Ted Wheeler. I'm thanking every person who's behind me right now, every person who showed up today, who's outside right now because they were barred from coming in, those who are watching from home, and to the folks who couldn't make it to this meeting because of the inaccessibility of the scheduling. We are all here to stand up to you, Ted, to you, Carmen, and Dan, and Renee, and Mingus, and say no to this inhumane and violent ban. We will not let you eradicate an entire community. We're sitting here, and you're sitting here in hate and greed, and we are showing up with radical love for our neighbors, our community members, our friends, our family. We come week after week to fight the step-by-step process that you are all creating toward a total state of fascism. And make no mistake, this will be all y'all's legacies, all of you.
Hello, my name is Isabella. I'm speaking here today on behalf of Free Lunch Collective, a mutual aid group here in town providing meals and supplies to our unhoused neighbors on a weekly basis.
If you do this anyway, I'm sorry, but you're idiots. I have been active in local politics for a long time. So this has been more of the same old, same old, same old, and all you're gonna get from that is the same old stuff.
Hello, I'm 17, and I live downtown, and I oppose this camping ban. I'm not afraid when I go to my Mac stop to go to school, and I'm not afraid of the conversations I have with the people that this ban would criminalize.
We house folks don't want to see the price that other people pay for our privileges. For this, you should stop sleeping well if you have any consciousness at all. For this, you should... For this, you should burn in hell. And I'm sorry. It's so ugly what you're doing. I'm sorry.
Hello, I am Jamie Chee, and I am the Reimagining Community Safety Manager with Unite Oregon, also a member of the Anti-Displacement Coalition. I strongly urge you to reject this ordinance.
My name is Stephanie Phillips Bridges. I am a senior policy analyst at the Urban League of Portland.
Perfect, cool. So my name is Brian Kim. I go by he/him pronouns, and I'm the financial director of the People's Housing Project.
And I actually brought my family here to start my small business, which in part tries to plug the hole in the, you know, in the dearth of mental health services for children because of the clarity in the eyes and in the voices of all of the beautiful people who came out today in opposition of this ban.
The truth is, many of the homeless individuals on our streets were attracted to Portland because we've made permanent camping and open drug use far too easy and accommodating. Despite Portlanders paying tens of millions of dollars for homeless services, we still require zero responsibility and zero accountability from homeless individuals. This is not a sustainable social contract. Unfortunately, we also see homeless camps and drug addicted individuals so often now that we've become desensitized in a way to this human suffering and are forgetting that we have a role in helping end it. If we don't directly and proactively begin to intervene, we are instead actively contributing to the pain, addiction, and death on our sidewalks. It's time now to have the courage and conviction to set some new boundaries. I encourage you to please amend the city code. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Mo Phillips.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you sound great.
Hi, my name is Mo, and I'm an advocate at Rose Haven Day Shelter. I love the job where I get to help people access vital social services every day, including shelter, housing, mental health care, and treatment programs.
He started yelling at women, and eventually it escalated to the point where he hit somebody, he hit a woman in the back of the head with a rock, became known as the Rock Guy. We called the police over and over again to report this, reported its harassment and menacing, et cetera, but they wouldn't really do anything. There were a couple of issues like this, and the one thing about, and it sounds ridiculous, but the one thing that set him apart was that Robert lived in a tent. And so it seemed like he, like, because it was a homeless issue, no one would touch it. I think that we are really looking at so many different problems as homeless problems that we're not really giving the individual aspects of the problem the right amount of attention. So for example, I mean, there's so many different homeless people out there. There are some that choose, some that don't, some that are good people, there are some who are definitely bad apples.
Next up, we have Kat Turk.
Above your other shoulder, a devil dangles campaign cash. Not a soul in town, Ted, believes City Hawk can contain your ambition, but your ambition is so much greater than your talent for lying, and I hope your pals at the Business Alliance are honest with you about that. I know your goal was to sit back, put your feet up, and let the city fall apart like a house in a red line neighborhood. Investment opportunity, right? But these last six years, history keeps bursting in. Let that devil tempt you again, and he might buy you a term as the saddest scandal of one governor of state history. For once in your career, listen to the angels.
Folks, there are a lot of people who'd still like to testify on this issue, so I'm just asking you politely, let's keep it to this issue. It's been a lot of ad hominem attacks today. Let's focus on the policy. We're hearing good discussion. Let's, let's try and keep it to that. It wasn't relevant at all. With all due, with all due respect, it was not. Next individual, please.
Sorry. Hi, my name's Aleah. I live in Old Town Chinatown. I'm a Portland native, 46 years from foster care. I was a teen mom, and I'm also disabled. For over two years, residents of McCormick Pier condos, the Yards, and Levon Housing have been brutalized daily due to the city's failure to remove its unsanctioned camp that covers over a square block of our neighborhood around the city's storage container for the homeless. The city's unsanctioned camp is centered around the city's homeless container with bathrooms. It sits in the part of the waterfront park just under the Still Bridge. This unsanctioned camp and storage container for the homeless belongs to the city of Portland. Currently, there's over 24-plus unsanctioned tents and trash that cover this area, and it's growing daily. There's even drug, they've even dug caves under the Union Station train track that crosses the Still Bridge. Open fentanyl use is rampant in this area of the waterfront park due to the city's large unsanctioned camp that Portland city leaders are allowing to grow larger. Residents are being tormented, abused, and traumatized daily from the situation that they have to walk through if they want to use public transportation, leaving the area between the Broadway Bridge and the Still Bridge. An elderly couple was severely beaten on a property by a man from this camp. Drug-addicted men from the same camp are following women home and showing up on their doorsteps, threatening sexual assault. There have been fires set to our property. We have had vehicles vandalized. There's been multiple overdoses, and a dead body was recently found on one of my neighbor's property. I watched, I watched a woman be sexually assaulted in this area at the same camp, me being a sexual assault survivor. This was hard for me to watch. Clustering five homeless services in our small area that attract unsanctioned campers, drug addicts, and criminals without strict regulations, 24-hour security, and oversight from the city is causing increased safety risk, trauma, and cost to the currently housed residents like myself who are vulnerable on fixed income, elderly, and suffering from mental health issues such as...
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sharlyn Penny. Sydney Poole.
Hello, my name is Sydney Poole. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm testifying to oppose Measure 451.
I don't know what the little political finesse of y'all rushing to pass this is because you're probably committed to domestic terrorism, whether you use this law or another law. Where the hell are the pride flags you had in storage? I want freedom for Ukraine, but last pride season, because it's not the first of July, or first of June yet, you can't put the 12 pride flags back in the window? Sidebar, sorry about that.
Welcome.
Thanks. My name's Ren Ronan. I'm the director of services for Portland Street Medicine. I think this code is a dressed-up version of other policies that have already failed.
This is not a housing issue. This is a, this is a mental health, drug treatment, alcohol, all mixed together in your face, and we gotta start doing something. So I'm, I'm really happy you're taking a step, at least one step, in the right direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Next up, we have Caitlin M.
You were put here by the people to serve the people, not just your friends and the privileged. Alternative solutions have been presented to you by numerous organizations and individuals willing to help with this problem that you seem to have deemed unsolvable, other than this ban. And you're sitting on your fucking phones. The youth, my peers, are here witnessing this today, future and present voters. You will not be representing us again. We will remember this, and we will rise against. You will not stay in power. This is not the first or the last time we will fight against this, and we will continue fighting. This ban will fail us and will crash and burn figuratively and metaphorically, or sorry, and anyways. Approve this ban, but know this, when the system collapses, we will remember your name and your face, and we will eat the rich. Invite, I implore you to invite all of these housespeople that you seem filthy and disgusting and undeserving of basic human rights, invite them to dinner. Give them a hug, show them love, but none of you guys are able to look them in the face. You see housespeople as filth, if you even see them at all. I am looking in the face of filth right now. You guys are disgusting, and you make me want to throw up. Thank you.
Gonzalez, Ryan, technically my boss, as I work for Parks and Rec.
Good evening. My name is Hori, as the county, as the council clerk said. I'm a student leader at McDaniel High School and a community leader in Cooley, which are both located in northeast Portland.
I live in a neighborhood that is 90%, maybe 95% non-white economically for working class with the majority of Section 8 housing. We live in fear, chaos, and oppression 24 hours a day, while the drug dealers and criminals are 90% plus white. We have all been threatened, assaulted, our property has been stolen, damaged. At one point, we were woken up.
So Commissioner Rubio's amendments on the table. Any further discussion on Commissioner Rubio's amendment?
I vote no.
I vote aye.
I'm a no vote. I appreciate the effort you made on that. The amendment fails. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everyone. P.S., and we're adjourned.